Thank you, Mike. We'll call to order the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for the town of Ashford for November 14th, 2022 at 7:04 PM. We have a number of guests and we have a couple of hearings scheduled for tonight. So if you will bear with us, we'll try to get everyone's feedback in that wishes to give feedback. Starting with calling order of seating of alternates at this point. I think. If I have counted right, Richard and Jeff, so we need to seat one alternate for Luther. And Doug, I'll be seeing you for Luther.
Yes, Jeff, that's good.
Okay, thank you. All right, speaking to the committee members, approval of the minutes from October 11th, 2022. Any issues, changes, corrections? Janet, go ahead, you're muted.
I'll move that we accept the minutes.
Do I have a second?
I'll second Alex.
Alex, second, thank you. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All those opposed? Abstentions?
Jeff, this is Doug Jenny, I will.
I'll abstain, Jeff.
So that'll be John Keller, I'm sorry, that'll be Doug Jenny and Jeff Scholinger. Sorry, abstaining?
Mr. Calabrese too?
No, John, you're not seated at this point, you're an alternate, correct?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's okay. You're obviously always good to give your input and always free to give your input as we talk about this. It's just when it comes to voting, it'll just be the seated members, as a reminder.
Got it.
Thank you. Okay, so approval of minutes have passed. Public comments for the good of the board, for items not listed to be discussed on the agenda. Anyone here to give us their two cents on something? Okay, very good. Bills, receipt of bills, Alex, any bills?
I don't have any bills.
No bills, okay. Moving on to correspondence. Alex, do you have any correspondence?
We didn't have any anything right now.
Okay, I do have a short series of emails to share. That were received. The first one was October 24th, Monday, October 24th. Mr. Brian Griffiths. It speaks to an earlier discussion we had in the previous. Meeting regarding some emails from October 6th that have gone on, so it starts out with. Thanks for the clarification, but you still did not address my all my questions regarding his so-called right to remove the material. Perhaps you can explain why the statement in the stipulated judgment regarding removing the process material. Based on approved market conditions for the material is there? Did Mr. Love meet what seems like a requirement? I am again requesting a clarification on this language as you did not address the specific question from my prior email. Your response generates a new question as well, how exactly will you be monitoring the activity? Do you have unfettered access to the property or must you ask permission to monitor the activity? In the past, there has been little if any monitoring by the town. Keep in mind that you can walk up to his property line via the Mildred Bicknell Preserve. Who is to say when he operates heavy equipment exactly what he is doing? He can claim what he is doing was related to hauling the material away. There have been many claims made by him since his initial application in 2016 over the past 76 months or so. I request you visit the site and compare it to your last visit. And accompanying report and ask yourselves the following, has he been excavating and leveling the land? Or he has been only trucking out processed material? That was again October 24th. On October 27th, Mr. Griffiths again sent the Planning and Zoning Commissioner an email. Today is October 27th, 2022. I sent the. I sent the a version of the email below on October 24th, 2022. Refer to this email when you respond with the additional questions and requests. I've waited patiently for an answer, it's been 72 hours. I think it might be appropriate to resend this, can someone with authority answer my questions? Let's see, on Thursday, October 22nd, Mr. Damato, our zoning enforcement officer wrote back. Much of the information, Brian, much of the information you are looking for requires interpretation of the stipulated agreement. Which is not something that would be proper for the PZC or staff to try and do. As I've mentioned previously, the PZC is working with the town's attorney to address non-compliance with the stip. As swiftly as possible. You may have already seen via the judicial room site that a motion for immediate hearing was filed by the town. And granted by the court on 9:30. An evidentiary hearing is to be held on 10:31. Thanks, Mike Damato. Then on. November 3rd, Mr. Griffiths wrote, anything you can tell me from the evidentiary hearing on 10:31? Who's in my place here? Okay, and I responded back to Mr. Griffiths on November 3rd. Brian, while we were prepared and in attendance for the hearing, the court docket was very full, too full. Once our case came to the top, another series of hearings was scheduled. The court also assumed we had a motion for a hearing, not a hearing itself. So the motion for a hearing was granted and the dates are being offered by. For some time in the last two weeks of November. As you. As to your earlier questions of monitoring, both the CEO and the executive board of the PNZ are spot checking the site on a regular basis. But not onsite at this point. We are working with counsel for suggesting a schedule of onsite inspections. We understand it. It, we understand. It's processing has stopped and the dismantling of the process equipment is taking place. Material is being moved as per the stipulated judgment. The construction company's ability to move the material is proof enough of a viable market. For it at this time. In Mike's earlier response, he had stated many of these final details are contingent upon the stipulated agreement reviewed by the court. Which is why we are seeking a hearing. We are disappointed, as I'm sure you are, that the hearing could not take place this past Monday. Until that new date is confirmed and the hearing held, we will continue to monitor the site as we have been since September 30th. We will have more discussion, again, this has to do with the 154 Westford Hill Road property. And we will have more discussion on this as per our agenda. But that was the end of the correspondence that we had received. Okay, so moving on to item six on our agenda, which are a couple of public hearings that we have. So at this point in time. As I open the first public hearing, I just want to remind the commission members that. The hearing's purpose is to gather. Information pertinent to the request of the applicant. It's to ask questions of the applicant to clarify the request. And the questions need to be pertinent. And within the scope of the applicable regulations. Okay, just as some reminders as to how to form, how to direct your questions, should you have any? So opening the hearing, the first is the. Application PZ 227. A special permit per section 300-20.1 for increased lot coverage. At its applicant is the owner applicant is Dee Lester of 10 Oakview Drive. We did receive these applications last meeting, so you should have the materials for that. And. I guess we can open it up to Mr. Lester or his representative.
Evening Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Mark Peterson. A professional engineer with Gardner and Peterson Associates in Tallahassee, speaking for the applicant Daniel Lester. He cannot join us this evening due to work commitments, while I'll be speaking for him. And just for the record, we also have notified the butters within 200 feet. That should be in your files as we did email those receipts to Mr. DeVado today. As you said, the properties on the north side of Oakview Drive, street number 10. Approximately six tenths of an acre in size where Mr. Lester resides. He does not have a garage at his home today, so the purpose of the application. Is to attach a 26 by 36 structure to the front of the. Home, which would be used for a two-car garage and a workshop. We'd be widening the driveway. And with those changes, we would exceed the 10% lot coverage. Requirement. As you said, the property is in the Lake District. We were asking for a special permit for that increased lot coverage. Today, the lot coverage is 7.6% based on my calculations. We would be going to 12.8% with the proposed garage and driveway improvements. I have designed a stormwater infiltration system to help. Offset some of the increase in that impervious surface. This would collect roof water from the proposed garage addition. That water would be captured in essentially like a small septic system. Encouraged to infiltrate that stormwater runoff and minimize that runoff to. Essentially bring down that lot coverage calculation, so if we eliminate. The proposed roof or lot coverage would be in compliance with your 10% regulation. So we put together a permit plan showing the location of the improvements. Sedimentation, erosion control, and we're here to ask for the special permit this evening.
You're all set, thank you, Mr. Peterson. Okay, it's open for any of the commission members for the questions of. Mr. Peterson or Mike? I guess my first question is, are you in agreement with some of the percentages that have been presented?
Yeah, we went through and reviewed the criteria in the regs, myself and Mark, and. Made sure that all the, all the setbacks and the calculations were correct. So just, I guess, to kind of back everybody up. For clarity, we have regulations which were adopted. About a year or so ago, which pertain to the Lake District. And in the Lake District, we set the lot coverage at 10% in an effort to ensure that. Properties did not become overdeveloped. If a property goes beyond 10%, we have a max. Cap. Within the district that allows for. For folks to go beyond the 10% via a special permit. But they have to create some type of a design solution for. The water that's being generated, so. Mark's prepared a site plan which. Is connected to the meeting materials, I can, I can bring it up if you're interested in looking at it and it will capture that increase runoff. That's being generated by the addition.
If he, that's what I was going to ask, if you did have a quick access to the site plan.
Yep.
That would be great, thank you.
Is that big enough?
If I was 10, 12 years younger, yeah, no, that's fine, Mike, thank you, no, that's good. That's better, that's great.
So if you look, we're basically looking at the property on the right hands, the dark gray is the proposed. And if you look at this sort of grid. Section here, these, these trenches on the right-hand side, roof infiltration system. So that is. Where the, the increased runoff will be. Collected.
Mark, this is Doug, got a question. Is, is there no infiltration system on the property today?
I'm not aware of any infiltration system today. No, I'm not aware of anything.
Okay, and so therefore, this proposal, would it be just capturing the runoff from the garage or both? This new proposed garage and the existing house?
I'm only designing it for the proposed garage addition.
Okay.
I have a question, what kind of septic and well, I see the well in the, in the drawing, is the well still in use? And what kind of septic system do you have?
So the well drilled well in use. You know, the owner just put in a new septic tank on the north end of the house. He's got three rows of stone trench. Working with the health district, we are required to show a code compliant septic area, which is that. Rectangular darker box to the right downhill of the septic area, so we did some test pits. And we've demonstrated, it's a fancy name for a compliant repair area. In case there is ever a failure on site that due to this garage expansion, we're not taking up any. Or the only potential repair area.
I noticed that it says a proposed driveway, that's not the current driveway that's there?
There's a narrow existing gravel driveway. Which we're going to widen and add a turnaround to. So I've. Included that in my lot coverage calculations.
Thank you. I also noticed in the, I happen to have the diagram still here, the. The carport is, there's a plan for relocating the existing carport or is it relocating or removing?
Relocating, and that's why I shaded that, so it is there today, but we need to move it. It would be. Right on the edge of the proposed driveway if it's not moved and. This will turn it a little bit as well, so I wanted to demonstrate that it would meet zoning setbacks in its new location.
I see, so EX is existing carport?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, so I'm sliding it west with a slight clockwise rotation. To move it off of the edge of the proposed driveway.
Are there any other questions from the, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I have a question. Oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry. Janet, go ahead first, then Duncan go.
I'm sorry, um, it's not clear, I didn't understand that, is the new driveway also gravel or is it going to be impervious?
Gravel.
Thank you.
Doug?
That's where I was gonna go, I'm, I'm looking at the site map calc's on the drawing and I saw it said gravel driveway. Should, I, I guess my question then, Mark, is. Should the driveway ever be paved in the future? I know it's not in the plan today. Can your infiltration system absorb that or would have to be upsized?
So, so I have included the gravel driveway in my lot coverage calculations.
Okay.
Maybe, I guess maybe I could ask you the question, most towns. Want me to do that, I guess I'm not certain about Ashford, I thought you did. Even though it's not paved, it's. I guess has a lot less permeability than the front lawn. Did include that in the calculations. Noted in my, my chart on the side of the plan. So I wanted to demonstrate that, with that being impervious, we would still. Meet your standard. Once I infiltrate the roof runoff.
For future reference, please do include those types of calculations and adding them in, and so we do, we do appreciate that. And giving us the full picture as opposed to a partial or potentially future picture.
Yeah, this is good, I, I think inclusion of the driveway is. Is the right thing to do like you did, Mark, for the reasons you stated. Thank you.
Any other questions from the commission members? I therefore open it up to any of the attendees, if anyone has any comment they wish to share on this. Application.
May I ask a question, please?
You certainly may.
My name's Tom Barry, I'm the president of the Ashford Lake Property Owners Association. My name isn't appearing there, but that's who I am. I have a question about the driveway entrance where it traverses the drainage swale along Oakview Drive. I don't think the existing pipe is anywhere near. Compliant with any kind of regulations that the town has. And even though our roads are private roads, we'd like to ensure that driveway aprons and pipes and. Associated riprap and sediment controls crossing the swale from our road are. Adequate, can you kind of describe what the plan is for the driveway entrance?
The direct entrance, I'm not proposing any changes to. We have an existing cross culvert. Under the driveway, parallel to and close to Oakview Drive. Which the apron extends across that existing culvert. So all the work I'm proposing is. North of that paved apron.
Okay, so the, what exists there is going to remain the same, basically.
Correct.
Okay, I was just curious because you mentioned you were going to widen the driveway, so I assume that would involve widening the entrance.
No, I'm going to leave the entrance the same, I, maybe I should have been more clear about that, it's more of a one-lane. Driveway today. But since he's going to have a two-car garage. That one-lane entrance will widen into the two bays. For a two-car garage and then have a turnaround.
Okay, great, thank you.
Anyone else, public comment or commission members? Okay, Mr. Peterson, thank you very much for the input, we really appreciate the presentation and the discussion. We will be discussing this once we move from our hearings to the regular meeting tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. So that closes the first public hearing. On. That issue. And with that, we move on to our second public hearing, PZ 22-6 application. A special permit per section 300-17D for a short-term rental. At the location of 73 Lakeview Drive, owner applicant is Jay Hall. So again, this was a receipt of an application we did last meeting, so everyone should have the. Application information. Available, plus Mike had it posted for us, so. I'll open it up, is there someone representing Mr. Hall?
Yes.
I am, oh, sorry, didn't see you up there, there are too many people here, too many boxes, thank you.
That's okay. Thank you, we're here, as you said, for application to 317D. Pursuant to the regulations that are in place. And are here to hear questions from the commission and the public. And to reinforce the any concerns. Of questions that might be had.
Okay, I'll start the ball, um, so your application for short-term rental. Permit probably listed as a short-term on Airbnb and Verbo. In accordance with the regulations set forth for PNZ. So I take it you are familiar with our short-term rental regulations?
Yes.
Okay. And again, just a reminder that. This is a relatively new amendment that we've added to our regs, so again. Having a little bit of control over what's going on. The first permit issued has a one-year expiration date. And then after that, and then after that, with compliance with all regulations. Remanued permits are good for two years from that point, and the planning and zoning officer does have. Authority to revoke any type of permit that's been issued. Based on complaints, documentation, photographs, any type of. Appropriate. Evidence of non-compliance and. Then that such revocation is brought to the attention of the commission and a hearing would be held regarding that permit. So not saying you guys would do any of that, I'm just trying to bring up what. Out there. Um, we also have a limitation on the frequency, I'm going to, just to confirm, I'm going to go to a couple of our authors, Janet and Mark. Um, do you, can you quote for me what the, or let me know, without putting you on the spot, what our limitation is for short-term rental?
Is this a hosted, is this a hosted or an unhosted short-term rental? So will, will you be residing in the, at the property during the rental or not?
Well, the regulation calls for permanent residence, correct? So we need further clarification, typically a permanent residence is six months or more. Where we would occupy or use the property. And then, then the other six months or less, we would, we would prepare for short-term rental. Unhosted.
So, so, so according to our regulations right now, unhosted is three times during a six-month period. With each time not to exceed, not to exceed 28, you know, has to be less than 28 days.
Yes. Yes, we did read that, yeah.
So, so if you were renting it on a, on a weekly basis, that would be. You know, three weeks if it was, you know, a two-week period, you rented. For six weeks if it was. You know, to, to three different individuals.
Correct. That's, yes, as, as the regulations are currently. Written and enforced, yes, I agree.
So is that your intent to, to abide by those regulations?
That's, that is, that is our intent.
Okay. Did that answer your question, Jeff?
Yes, thank you very much, Mark. Uh, commission members, any, any other questions from? The commission members regarding the short-term rental applicant? Okay, I will reach out to the public, any public comment regarding the application at hand?
Yes, my name is Martin Kulov, I live on Lakeview Drive, so the same, same street. I believe that since this is part of the Lake Shafie Association. It's also subject to regulations from the associations. For commercial use of properties. So that's one issue. The second thing, if it's, if it's rented for like the whole summer to one family, I think that's. That seems like a very nice thing to do. But if it's rented for very short periods, then you can have short-term people coming in partying and making a lot of noise. On the property or during the few days that they are there, and that's, this is, this is a very quiet neighborhood, so that's a concern.
So, so this is Mark Schnabel. So Martin, if, if they were to rent it on a weekly basis, they would only be allowed to rent it for. A total of three weeks during a six-month period of time.
Thank you for that, thank you for that comment.
And now, they would have, and if I'm wrong, Mark, please, you know, correct me on this. If it were for over the, the three-month summertime period, June, July, August or something. They would have the ability to rent three times at 28 days each. During that time, correct, and then that would just limit it for the rest of the before and after for six months. And then that would just limit it for the rest of the before and after for six months.
Correct.
Okay, all right. So the most they would, the potentially most there would be would be three renters over the course of summer.
Correct.
And Mr. Coldorf, to your concern about noise or anything like this, that's one of the reasons why we've given the enforcement capabilities of the zoning enforcement officer to respond to complaints or anything that causes renters of a short term rental that causes a owner or butters unreasonable or unlawful use and enjoyment of their property. So hopefully, you know, if if something were to come up at some point along these lines that you do reach out to the land use office and the zoning enforcement officer to make a full complaint so that we can log this and keep a record of it.
Thank you for that comment.
Thank you. Anything else from the public at large?
Yes, hi. So we're direct neighbors of the property that is going to, you know, be rented. And I have some concerns because I have small children that spend their summers there. And I, you know, we signed a deed and the deed specifically states that no business can be in Lakeview Drive. And I'm not comfortable with having, no matter how many different kind of renters as my neighbors for the summer when my small children are there.
And that was the Barrios?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment.
I'd also like to make a comment.
Sorry, I didn't see who that was, but of course you can make a comment. Who are we talking to?
Erwin Krieger. Can you hear me? I can't. My screen isn't lighting up. You can hear me. Okay.
We can hear you, yes.
Okay, yeah. My name is Erwin Krieger. I'm a resident of Lake Chaffey, also on Lakeview Drive. I also happen to be on the board, but I'm not speaking as a board representative, but just as a person in the community. And one of the things my partner and I value the most about Lake Chaffey is the sense of community that we feel with our immediate neighbors and with the people we know around the lake. So we're very concerned about the lake opening itself up to short term rentals. But the house next door to us, when it was up for sale a few years ago, the first buyer that was accepted were people from out of state who were going to do an Airbnb. And then when they checked the town regulations, they did decline. And then instead, we have a neighbor who's really a neighbor and friend. And so we're just concerned that if some of these permits go through that people, when houses go up for sale, people will see it as a business opportunity rather than being part of a community. And the more houses you have around the lake that are basically renters rather than people living there. I don't mean like full year renters, long term renters, but when you have short term renters, rather than people living there, I think it hollows out the sense of a community. So I'm very concerned about establishing a precedent for allowing short term rentals in the community. I know there are places that have been eaten up by Airbnb and VRBO, and I don't want our place to become one of them. And I also noticed, I thought in the regulations that said that the short term rental has to be the primary residence of the renter. And in this application, it didn't look like seventy three Lakeview is their primary residence. Maybe I misunderstood that. But and I had heard about the three times in six months, but I didn't see that written. I would be interested in knowing, you know, where that is. Because I'm also concerned about how are we going to hold people to that? Are we supposed to be standing outside taking notes on who's coming and when they're leaving? And so I'm a little concerned about how that gets regulated. But my bigger concern is just about whether this becomes the start of a trend that really changes something we value very deeply about the community. Thank you.
I'll take that, Jeff, or Erwin, the the short term rental unhosed in the definitions section is where the three times in six months is listed. So it's in the in the term definition section prior to the regulations.
And can I can I just address one of your one of your concerns, Mr. Krieger? One of the reasons that we limited the number of rentals to three times every six months is to discourage any investors from just purchasing property only to rent it. But we felt that this would allow homeowners to to rent their property because a lot of them are do do that to help, you know, pay for expenses. So trying to balance both of those is why we came up with that number.
I do I do appreciate that. I my understanding was that this this property was purchased for the purpose of being a B and B or being a rental. This this is not, as far as I understood, people actually moving in in a real sense and then renting it out. But I appreciate the 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 three time limitation. I guess my only other question would have to be, how is that going to be? Are people, are the owners going to be like registering with the town each time they have a rental? How is that going to be monitored or police that people will actually stay within the three times in six months? Or, you know, do we have a situation where neighbors have to be like reporting on neighbors?
I I would say, just looking at the regs, I do not see a section on that, obviously, except for review on an annual basis or biannual basis. If it's after the first year and the second year is renewed and that the subsequent permit is renewed for two years. I, you know, maybe maybe that is something we have lacking in our regs as to some type of registration or control along those lines. So we know what's going on. Mike, do you have any input on that?
Yeah, you know, number one, I think from a response perspective, just like everything else, we we would react to a situation. So if if there was a concern about the frequency of rentals, you know, we could very easily verify through whatever website they're advertising. Typically, those calendars are available. I think you can actually reach out to them directly, the not the applicant, but the the operator, whether it be Airbnb, HomeAway, VRBO, whatever, to get verification. But also the permit is only good for, you know, one year. So after that twelve months, it expires. And when they come back for their second permit, if they can't present evidence of compliance or there's something that suggests otherwise, then the commission has the opportunity to then choose not to issue the permit. So we would we wouldn't necessarily be vetting this on a month by month or week by week basis. But we could certainly do the background and and that would become evidence in the public hearing for the subsequent renewal.
And also, if you look under subsection four, the the P and Z doesn't have to wait an entire year to revoke a permit. You know, subsection four, a permit of any time length may be revoked if the zoning administrator receives information in the form of complaints, documentation, photographs, or witnesses noncompliance of the regulations of the permitting. So so the regulations do do give the power to revoke the permit, you know, within that yearly permit.
Right, I'm just going to Mr. Krieger's concern regarding again, having neighbors spying on neighbors or something like that. I don't think that's the case, but I don't think we will either. We will also not be sending out crews to review or to look at the status of what's going on there. It would really be a matter of if something becomes so out of compliance that it becomes an issue, then we will deal with it and have the authority to do so, as what Mark just pointed out. I guess I would also touch upon Mike and or Tom regarding the lake communities and the deeds and such like that that were stated. Mike, maybe you have something else to comment on, but I'd be happy to hear what you have to say on something that the Barrios had indicated about a business or something like that.
I'm sorry, Jeff, were you speaking to me?
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, Mike panic.
Oh, great. Great. There's so many boxes. I wanted to make sure I might be the not be the only Mike. Thanks, Jeff. Good evening, Commission. My name is Mike Panic. I am a Lake Chaffey resident and an alternate on the board of directors for Lake Chaffey. I was the past president for multiple years. Some of you may remember me from other meetings that I've attended. I attend here, though, as a citizen of Ashford and a resident of Lake Chaffey. I have an expressed interest, obviously, in the application on the short term rental. And I want to make sure that the town is considering all aspects of due diligence on the the short term rental situation, as was mentioned earlier by Mr. Silverstein. The this is a whole new process to the town. We went through, your commission went through a whole lake redistricting that I was a part of and the lake was aware of. I see that our other sister lake here in town is represented tonight as well. And I want to bring your attention just a few things, a few comments. I can't say that I'm for or against the application necessarily, but I'm definitely neutral, I would say, but very concerned with some of the comments that my constituents in in the lake community have already expressed. And I want to add to that these few things. On the application, letter F, there's a box that's checks for wetlands and watercourses. And on the application, it says not applicable. I wonder if I could get a definition. I know what wetlands is and watercourses are. And they're directly on the lake. This property is not off the lake. It's on the lake. So I would think that this definitely is affected in the water course situation. And if that's the case, and you check yes on that box on the application, you'd have to bring this in front of the bring this in front of the inland wetlands to get approval, to try to do this on the edge of the lake. I'm sure that they may be interested. Also, on the application, the driveway is listed that they either just had it paved or they have a bill that it's going to be paved, that it's eleven feet wide. And in the regulations for B, section seven, B one, it states the driveways need to be fourteen feet wide so that emergency vehicles can come and go from a residence. And so I would think that the driveway doesn't qualify from your own regulations. Also, on the application, it states that there's a washer and dryer at the property. And I believe the property has to be on a septic. And if so, there's many current lakeside homes that are more like cottages. I I own one myself. It's lakeside. It's very small in square footage. And I think that this this since it may not be built for year round usage, has the septic been approved for the excess use that it'll now get? And are there leaching fields? Because if those leaching fields get taxed, the leaking fields obviously leach right into the lake if you're lakeside. So I would be concerned with that. The application also shows a picture of a bedroom with what appears to be a loft bedroom with very low ceilings. I want to know if the house has to be code compliant because I don't think six and a half or seven foot ceilings would be code compliant for use as a bedroom. Pictures that were submitted with the application also show a ladder leading up to that bedroom with no railing. So I'm not sure if the resident has to meet building codes to rent the property. But it does look like there are a few things on the property that might not qualify as, you know, as code compliant for building regulations. I would not let my little one climb up that ladder and stay upstairs in a bedroom that's not code compliant. A side note to that is there's been a lot of work done on the property. There's definitely been some deckwork done on the property. There's a driveway that was put in. I'm not sure of the exact town regulations, but I suspect that permits were needed to be pulled for to have some of the work that's been done at the property since it was sold. And when the LCIA inquired with the town billing department, we were told that no permits were pulled on the property. I again question whether the property is even legal to have a, you know, a rental in it, let alone else, if you if you're not code compliant with the billing department. Furthermore, section, section four, B, section four, A one, in your zoning regulations talks about what was talked about previously, which was, is this the owner's primary residence? I I know by information that I've gathered that this is not the owner's primary residence. So that gets into what Mr. Schnubel was talking about. Sorry if I pronounce your name wrong. About, you know, how often you can rent it and when will it be rented if this is not their primary residence? I'm pretty sure that the owners of this particular property own other properties that they use for Airbnb as well. So I don't think if they can only rent it out three periods, and even if it's three weeks times three, that's nine weeks. What will happen the rest of the time at this house if it's not going to be resided in by the applicant during those maximum of nine weeks that can be rented, which would be three, three week periods? So I'd like to like to get some clarification on that and how that's going to work. And again, who's keeping track of that? I think that keeping track of that's going to be impossible and you're going to have neighbors, neighbors. Section four, B, section five, A adds an additional requirement for permits depending on the application. So I'd like to make sure that all the permits and everything has been done. It also says in the regulations that they're supposed to get a zoning permit prior to getting this special permit. So I want to make sure that, since I did not see online the lake, the lake district information when I looked, and maybe I looked in the wrong spot, but I know that you have new regulations. I want to see that there's nothing in your lake regulations. We heard on the previous application about lock coverage. I'm not sure what else you may have on that subject. And the last thing I'd like to say is in article five, G, section four, A, it says that the applicant must submit to the commission a certificate of mailing to all of the residents that are butters. And I didn't see that in the online information for the public to read. So I want to make sure that so that that is collected and make sure that the neighbors within two hundred feet were notified. I suspect that they were, but it's again, I want to make sure that the town is dotting i's and crossing t's on this very, very sensitive subject. So depending on the answers or opinions on the board, I believe at a minimum, this application should be tabled or denied until all the information is clarified or completed by either the planning and zoning board and or the applicant. And I thank you for your time. And the last thing which I think started this, Jeff, was the LCIA board did meet about this. I see that the president of our association is in a square in the meeting, so I know he's here. I was at the meeting and we are trying to put together, you know, some of our own information. Because like you, we were kind of sideswiped by this. We we found it online that this was happening. And, you know, we want to maybe have our own rules and regulations that, you know, can can go alongside the town's regulations. And I think that this is new enough, but I think some time is needed for both sides to, you know, get get a grip on this before. Like one of the other speakers says, you know, people that bought cottages or homes for the peaceful on Golden Pond effect, all of a sudden, you know, people are buying these to rent. We definitely don't want that. Again, a little long winded. Apologize. Thank you for your time.
Can I also follow up his comments? My name is Blith Kaufman. I'm a homeowner on the lake, Lake Chaffey on Amadon Drive. My husband is an alternate also on the board. Just speaking as a as a homeowner on the lake, one of my concerns is that we've had the water tested at the lake and we have a very clear lake with no invasives. And some of the ways that you prevent invasives from getting in are keeping drying your boat out for two weeks if you're bringing a new boat in or very carefully treating it with bleach. And when you're a homeowner, you have a vested interest in keeping the lake free of any invasives, which we have a very shallow lake. And invasives would be devastating. We don't have deep coffers in terms of of resources in order to deal with a problem with invasives. And that would definitely decrease the value of everyone's home and the enjoyment of all the families and so forth. If you have short term rentals, these are the type of things people are going to be bringing in kayaks and and boards to to go on. And the incentive and policing of of keeping them dry for two weeks coming from another lake, and there's many invasives in Connecticut. There's just, it's going to be extremely difficult to enforce. And once that happens, it's not something like, oh, well, somebody brought in invasive, so now we're going to change the rules. It's like, it's, you know, it's a bell that you can't unring. And so as as Mike Panic was saying, that the board wants to take the time to to investigate this. I would think caution should be the way appropriate course going forward to. I would think caution should be the way appropriate course going forward to give the Lake Association the appropriate time to make you know, particular rules that are specific to a lake community, because we can't unring that kind of bell once you have invasives into the into the into the lake. And I think this opens us up for this to happen. And it would be a real shame for the whole community and for the town itself if this were to happen. And the resolution watch, it would be expensive, and I don't even think you can possibly do it without, you know, many kind of scary things like, you know, bugs that they've introduced into Candlewood and so forth to try to eat the invasives, which themselves became a horrible problem. So that's just one piece of the puzzle. We're also very concerned about just increased activity and and usage of the septics and all that kind of thing, because I think a lot of the zonings were done grandfathered in and not for the heavy uses. We have a washer dryer, but we don't use it because we're concerned about our neighbors and our own wells. And I'm not sure that renters are going to have those same concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. I have to apologize that I hope someone caught most of Mike's points because I got knocked offline for the vast majority of his discussion. So I'll need to review some of that when we go into meeting. Any other comments from the general public or or commission? Go ahead, Jen.
Mr. Chair, I'm just wondering if anyone from the board of Lake Chaffey has information about whether the deed does indeed say that there should be no business?
Yes, we have deed restrictions about businesses.
Is that is that specific to the renting out, or does it fall under a general provision?
I can read the wording. It says, said premises shall not be used for any commercial agricultural or manufacturing business of any kind. That's part of the Lake Chaffey deeds, which which is Lake Chaffey property on our agreed knowingly or unknowingly at the time of purchase.
So And what was, I'm sorry, what was the couple of words just before manufacturing? I'm sorry, I missed that.
Said premises shall not be used for any commercial agricultural or manufacturing business of any kind. So no commercial business of any kind.
Thank you.
Hello, this is Joe Hall.
Yes, Mr. Hall.
Could I respond to a couple of these concerns?
You most certainly may.
Okay.
So
this is my what?
My husband is a little sick right now. So the Lake Chaffey Association reached out to us with a lot of these concerns, and we met with them last week on their in their meeting. And we met with them, and we told them how how strict we are for our guests. We have waivers that there are no boats, outside boats allowed. They have to use the kayaks that are on our property. They are not allowed to use any outside boats. They're not allowed to use the boat launch. There it is strict on how many guests there are, and there are no visitors of the guests. I mean, there are our rules are stricter than Lake Chaffey's association rules. And they were so happy that we were there. And well, because to warn everybody and to relieve people's stress and uneasiness, we love the lake just as much as you guys, and we don't want any damage done to it. And we can enforce our rules. Our rules say if you break them, you are out. I mean, Airbnb, they do background checks of all the guests. There's, I mean, it is very strict.
Can I make a comment about also commercial use? By definition, any short-term rental is passive income. It's not commercial.
And the association mentioned that they would like to have a committee to come up to talk about short-term and rules about short-term. I mean, my husband wasn't even appointed onto the committee. We are not trying to do anything bad here. And we, like I say, our waivers are extremely strict.
And also, yeah, as a primary rule, use will be for ourselves, well, for ourselves and immediate family members. So that is also, you know, a big opportunity to be considered.
Can you clarify about Mike Panic's questions about, did you permit the work that was done on your property? I'm just, you know, in terms of compliance with other rules in the town, how how that has that been going?
Well, the paving company was supposed to pull a permit because that is their their job to do that. And the deck that we we repaired was existing.
Thank you.
Sorry, Eric over here. Looking at Verbo, and it doesn't look like they do any type of background checks for any of the people that are going to be using that app, I guess, for the rentals. And if you if you are enforcing them, and I completely understand if they break the rules or out, but essentially, these are short-term rentals. So if they're out, doesn't matter. They're going to leave anyway. So whether they break the rules or not, they're going to be leaving within a day or two. So what's the point of enforcing anything?
This is Marty Connors, president of the LCIA. I just wanted to speak to a couple of things that have come out. One of them is that Joe and his wife did very kindly participate with one of our meetings, and many of the things that he did or asserts that he did, and I take him at face value, we were very pleased to hear about that, particularly the limitation on who gets to use a boat. But I have to pick up on something that Blythe already mentioned is that milfoil is a disastrous weed to have in your lake, and it just takes one person, even if they they signed the agreement that Joe has, one person comes in with a nice fishing boat, and they lower the trailer into the water against against Joe's rules, granted. But that is all we need to have the lake pretty well damaged by these invasive species. And all of Joe's good intentions, I totally acknowledge. I appreciate them. But we do have difficulty in enforcing things. So some of some of the times we need to consider that we can't always enforce the rules that we have. But one inadvertent action can have a disastrous consequence for the lake. Thank you.
Can I comment on that as well?
Absolutely.
Do we have a public boat launch on the lake?
Yes, we do. So how do you how do you regulate the boats that are coming and going? We assume that they're only they're limited to just Lake Chaffey residents. And Jerry, who is our our kind of enforcement officer, keeps a really close watch on the lake and on the boats that are being used by the launch.
Okay. It's not a public launch, just as a clarification. It's for the private use of the Lake Association members. It's not a public launch. My husband, who's on the board, was just was just echoing that. He's in the other room. But yeah, it's it's not a public launch.
Understood. And how do you regulate boats that are brought there? How do you know that somebody is using a boat that owns the lake, who lives on the lake, doesn't go to another lake and bring that same boat back and not?
Well, the constable lives right at the boat launch, so he is actually, as they said, with a good view of that and knows a lot of the residents there. And again, it is just a private community. So it's only for the private community of the Lake Association. And again, those people have a vested interest because they own the properties that they are living in to not to follow the regulations of disinfecting your boats with bleach or keeping them out of the water for at least two weeks. So that's the incentive that a natural person who lives the lake would have that a short-term renter would not.
And again, we are very restrictive. We don't allow people to bring outside boats, paddleboards, paddleboats, fishing boats. We have kayaks and paddleboards that have been completely cleaned. I don't know. How you regulate other folks and police other other boats that are on the lake?
When a boat backs down to boat launch, I check it to make sure it's clean and that the people belong here. Because we get people coming from all the towns, and they go, oh, I'm just here. I'm visiting my uncle. And my uncle lives across the lake. What's your uncle's name? Oh, I can't remember. And then I tell them they can leave.
Jerry, to Mr. To Mr. Hall's point, though, I mean, you're not there 24 hours, 370, 365, you know, seven days a week.
No, I'm not.
So, yeah, and putting it to one person like that or to assume that there's you know, that full coverage that's any more compliant than Mr. Hall is trying to, Mr. and Mrs. Hall are trying to be is, you know, a pretty, pretty hard assumption to take. Any other comments from the group?
Yes, I would just like to pipe in a little bit. My name's Tony Garen. I live with my husband on 55 Lakeview Drive, and a couple of things I feel similar. I feel very torn about the whole subject. I think as far as monitoring boats that come and go, unfortunately, it is sometimes left in the owner's hands if Jerry isn't here to speak out and say, hey, where do you live? What's your address? Because it's a private lake. So that's the best we can do in the world we're living. I think the issue is more of things compounding. I, my husband and I think much of you, not even knowing you, we love that you improved your properties. And we understand. There's a saying, everything is permissible, but not everything is beneficial. And I think that's the scary part here. Maybe one of the rental places that you're going to go through screens, the people that would be there short-term. But I know that any short-term rentals we've ever gone on, they asked us very little, and we just had to be sure to have a charge card. So I'm glad that you're conscientious about that. It concerns me in general, just the general spirit of the world right now. People don't follow rules. And I don't want to have this then become, as others have mentioned, the snowball effect of it becoming a lake where everybody buys properties as investments, and strangers are coming and going on a weekly basis as I walk my granddaughter around the block. At least now I know the people. The the people know us. I can walk around and feel fairly safe and not worry about too too much. The most things we worry about are when there are visitors that, when unmonitored, live a little bit beyond what we would want our granddaughter or our family to be around. We love what you did with the properties, and I love to hear that you're strict and and I'm torn because everyone should have the right to to do invest investing things. But I'm not sure Lake Chaffey was meant to be that place. We all live very close to one another. And we've got enough trouble with the people that live here as far as, you know, not washing every day their laundry and so forth, because we don't want to live in a police state and monitor each other. And I am. I'm torn. I'm torn at the same time. I'll never forget the first time we saw the side deck and we thought, oh, oh, thank goodness, they're taking care of the property. And it was nice. It's a very emotional subject for all of us. And I thank you all for your time, and I appreciate the planning and zoning's oversight on this because we're certainly going to need it. And thank you.
Thank you, Tony.
Yeah, so just one last thing I want to say, Eric, again. I used to old, I used to know the old owner that used to be there on the property. And I know since they moved in, I'm wondering, you know, who is kind of monitoring to make sure that everything is being done legally and up to code. I know they mentioned they fixed the deck. From what I remember, I'm pretty sure the deck was not supposed to be there to begin with, and it seems like the deck was extended now. What I'm also concerned about is essentially this is going to be a mini hotel, right? There's there's just a fire pit in the back, like a bonfire. Is this something that now I have to be concerned about with someone getting hurt, someone going into the water and getting hurt? You know, insurance, like my insurance is going to go up if they get wind that now there's a mini hotel next to us. Like, what what is it exactly? You know, that they're doing to make sure that everything's going to be safe for everyone? Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Can I make a couple of questions or comments?
Absolutely, Mr. Barry.
Okay, thank you. I just dialed in this evening, and there's a couple of our other residents who are on here also because we're dealing with the same basic phenomenon, and it's something new, and it's something that we haven't had to to really deal with before. And listening to all of the comments, I don't have any comments about the particular permit application at Lake Chaffey specifically, but many of the comments in general, including the comments on invasive plants and so forth, they really, you know, sound quite familiar. There are many of the same concerns that we share. Now, we're in a kind of a unique situation, a little bit different from Lake Chaffey, because we have properties in the town of Eastford as well. And the town of Eastford has no zoning regulations whatsoever. And at present, we have two Airbnb properties that are in the town of Eastford, so they're virtually unregulated. So we've established a subcommittee of our board, and we're studying what our options are in terms of coming up with some regulations that will apply to our lake in total, both Ashford and Eastford. So that's pretty much where we are. I did have a question about the three-week situation. I rather the three times in six months. How does that six-month period get determined? Is it like January to June, June to December? What are the what are those six-month blocks? Does it start with when you get when a person gets a permit for a six-month period? That was a little vague. And secondly, a lot of these rentals, and it's part of the issue, actually, is they're really short-term. They're not like 20, they're not like 28-day rentals. They're not even weeks sometimes. Sometimes they're just a weekend. So people come in, leave, and sometimes issues occur in a very short period of time. So if you have three rentals in a six-month period, and you rent your property for three weekends in July, are you done for the six months?
Yes.
Okay, well, that that's going to kind of put a pretty strict restriction on a lot of people, because some of the the rentals are are like revolving doors. They're not even a week in many cases. So thank you for that clarification. So I just I just wanted to, you know, let the people at Lake Chaffey know that we have many of the same concerns. We're going to be dealing with many of the same issues. And thank you for all the comments that have been provided, because they're going to give us some valuable information going forward.
Thank you, Barry. Or Mr. Barry. Any other comments?
Yeah, sorry. My name's Seth Kaufman. I'm Blythe's husband, and I just was I just wanted to respond to one issue that was raised earlier concerning the invasives and a very reasonable question about the boat launch and how it's monitored. I mean, nothing, no system is perfect. It's an honor system for the residents and for the long-term renters. But of course, the residents have the greatest investment in having the lake stay clean. Long-term renters probably less so, but certainly more than short-term renters would. So I think, you know, it isn't perfect. We don't have a perfect leasing system. But I think the the short-term renters, just by virtue of their, you know, investment in the upkeep of the lake being so minimal, it's it's the greatest risk. And, you know, the frequency of that turnover puts puts us at greatest risk. So I think that's kind of our perspective on the issue of the invasives. So thank you very much for hearing my comment. the issue of the invasives. So thank you very much for hearing my comment.
Thank you.
And yes, I agree with the Kaufmans and everyone else that lives on the lake. We've been doing our best to keep this lake clean. I've only been here eight years and and I think we're also a backup water supply. And so it the short term, that's so just the coming and going of people that even if they care and they care as much as they possibly can, it's not the same as when you live here. It just isn't. And I wish it weren't so.
Okay.
You something? Oh, I'm not.
Another comment?
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Um, one of our rent, one of our, one of our guests that we hosted once was a Swiss ambassador and her children. We make sure our guests are five-star, they're rated. We do not want any pub rooms. We don't want any wild parties.
We don't permit.
We don't permit them. We have in our house, we have.
We have waivers that each guest has to sign prior to renting.
And we even have systems inside the house that tells us how many cell phones are in that house. How loud it is in that house. We go beyond, way beyond. Maybe we're, maybe we're different than other people. I mean, there are other short-term rentals right now on the lake. We are trying to do what's right instead of going and just renting like three other people are. We have special insurance that makes sure that everything is safe in the house. The guideline that we have to ensure the house is, is, is that ladder has rails now on both sides. Uh, you know, and this, you don't understand, um, what it, what it entails to be able to, to even be on, on Airbnb's like, we have over seven hundred five-star ratings. We are super, super hosts. We want to do what's right. We take pride in what we do. We take pride in the lake. We take pride in our house. And we wouldn't want to ruin it either.
Secondary comment, as, as the board may know, seventy-six Lakeview Drive is also under our ownership. Uh, there we are, our daughter and son-in-law are, are slated, that's the target for them to, they currently live in New Hampshire and have been having desire to move to Connecticut and we purchased that property with the target of them becoming residents around the, of the link community. Um, so we would have further visibility into, you know, the rental situation across the street.
Okay, thank you. Um, and, uh, for the halls, I just want to be sure that you didn't feel like you were on trial here in a way. It was a hearing to gain information. I think you've heard some very good things about your efforts and what you've tried to do and what you've tried to present and how you've tried to be a good neighbor. And I think that, that should, that, that that just bodes well for you. That just, you should feel good about that. And, uh, I think we had a number of people mention that and like, you know, what you've done. I'm not going to get into it too much. I was a little put off by some of the, uh, aspersions about, uh, permits and things like this. And I'm sure that, uh, knowing, you know, hearing what the halls have done, that I'm sure everything was met with, uh, uh, the requirements that were needed to be done from building permits to everything else along those lines. So, um, again, uh, you weren't on trial here. You were just, uh, part of the hearing. We appreciate your input. Uh, we appreciate the input from the folks at the lake also, uh, both lakes and, uh, the issues there. Uh, are there any other, before we close, are there any other comments from anyone? I want to give everyone an opportunity. That's commission or public.
I just wish that I had seen you and met you before today. Thank you for the time.
Okay.
Hello?
Yes.
Bob Corvo. I have, and my wife Susan is with me also. I live at Lake, I'm a past president of the association, a past board member for multiple years. Uh, just for clarification, there is nothing in the charter. We're chartered by the state of Connecticut. And authorized as a municipality, a taxing district by the state. There's nothing in the charter. There is nothing in the ordinances and or bylaws that restrict, uh, any type of rental, whether it's considered short-term, long-term or intermediate. I am in favor of the halls. After having an in-depth conversation with them and, and how they appreciate their property and how they've maintained it and are improving it. And they have experience in the past with Airbnb and, and Verbo and, and I feel confident they will continue as they've done it before. I can appreciate the concerns of, of members of the lake as far as contamination, uh, and other things. However, if two or three or four people are living in a house, there's no more usage of that house than there would be, uh, if they were living there all the time. Uh, regarding wetlands, I had spoken to, uh, Bruce Fitzback regarding it. And he said, because there's no increased usage, uh, as far as they knew, there's no need to go to wetlands. I know Mike Panic had had made a reference, if someone had made a reference to that, but I am totally in favor of it. Uh, and, and I hope the board sees it that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Corvo. Seeing no more yellow boxes pop up. Again, I appreciate everyone's input. Uh, the board has, uh, some, uh, discussion to do on this issue. I will now bring the hearing, uh, to a close, uh, for the two issues. And we will resume our regular, uh, agenda for the, uh, regular scheduled meeting. Thank you all. Okay, uh, for the commission, uh, moving on to unfinished business. I, I'm concerned about whether we should be in discussion on Westford Hill Road in an executive session. But I, uh, I know we have a number of people on with other items on here. I'll just give an update. Simply that, uh, as stated in the, uh, earlier read emails, the correspondence that, uh, due to some of the court staff who some issues there, uh, and their interpretation of what we were seeking um, for the evidentiary hearing, um, the motion was passed, uh, on the, was it the thirty, the thirty-first? Mike?
Yes.
And for our hearing and that date has been set for November twenty-eighth at two P M. Um, we are again in close discussions with Ken Slater and, uh, our movement of, uh, basically just being sure that they are aware of at the, the owners of one fifty-four, uh, Westford Hill Road are aware of the requirements of the stipulation as laid out to them during the site visit previously in, uh, September. And the current status of that stipulated agreement. Um, we understand the processing has stopped at this point. Um, Alex, uh, myself, uh, and I don't know if Mike's made his way out there at this point. Um, have seen, you know, trucks moving out, uh, material being moved out, large, uh, piles of material being reduced. And, uh, we hope to have more information and some, uh, final efforts, if you will. Uh, come, uh, the twenty-eighth of the month when we do have the hearing and, uh, hopefully have, uh, some input from the court. Uh, any comments or questions or anything, uh, we can provide to the, uh, commission? Okay. Thank you. Uh, affordable housing plan, uh, Mike, did you have any, uh, comments on this?
Yeah, so I just wanted to just, uh, ha- keep this on here to update where things are. So we, um, had the discussion at the last meeting, um, about the, the survey results and we had, um, the woman from the Ashford Housing Authority, whose name just escaped me.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, Jessica Attent, we, we had basically discussion about her thoughts and the survey results. And, and so now what we'll do is start working on taking the survey results, taking the, the data that we've got, the demographics, everything that we've compiled to this point and put together something, um, that is starting to look more like a draft of the plan with some recommendations and that will then provide to you for review and comment. So we'll start pulling together all these various pieces and come up with something that's a bit more narrative as we start to move towards preparing an actual plan. So, um, you guys should all have received a full copy of the survey results. Um, so if you have questions or, or anything after looking at those, definitely let me know. They're also posted on the website for everybody to look at. So I'll, I'll have, um, for December, a narrative of the, the data demographics, um, and an analysis of the survey results and kind of how those dovetail with some suggested recommendations for the commission to consider.
Thank you, Mike. And I can also say that I failed to make the, uh, citizen last month with an article for, uh, affordable housing on that. I have it in a draft form right now. I'll probably forward it on for, for Mike's review, um, to take a look at and we can probably get it in for the December. Uh, citizen, again, kind of an overview with some of the input. Um, I can say regarding affordable housing, there have been a number of articles, uh, in the Hartford Current, most recently regarding towns in Connecticut and affordable housing. Um, I think, uh, one was just in today regarding Glastonbury, following through on a purchase of, uh, uh, a property, uh, of land in Glastonbury that was targeted for affordable housing. Um, again, it's not my suggestion at this point. It's just, uh, we're kind of at a point where, you know, if, I don't think a developer is going to come into Connecticut. This is just my own musings. Um, I don't think a developer is going to come walk into Ashford and want to start putting together affordable housing, uh, units in order to, uh, meet, uh, job needs or anything like that in the area. Uh, I think if there's a target for the town to try and do something, maybe similar to what was done back in nineteen ninety-five with, uh, uh, identifying the need, which is what we're trying to do here and, uh, doing something about it on our own, whether it's a bonding issue uh, or whatever, in order to have more affordable housing potentially for seniors. Uh, and, um, you know, however else we can, uh, at least it's a step in the right direction along those lines, trying to meet the need of our, uh, aging population and our seniors and giving them, because again, those units are pretty much chock full. Um, we also know there's a number of issues going on with the rental properties, the apartments in town too, where rents are going, uh, through the roof based on some dubious efforts of the owning companies of those rental properties and the current tenants in there. So, uh, maybe it's something that, uh, as, as a community as a whole, we need to look at. But, uh, again, just, just a couple of the points regarding affordable housing and that it is in the news. If you keep your eye open, you will see some movement in a number of the towns as to what they're looking to do. Again, it's mostly in towns where, as I said, where the jobs are, where people are, uh, working, where there's manufacturing, there's retail, things like this where people need to be able to access, uh, someplace to live in and around where they're working. Uh, we have a bit of a different need in Ashford, I think, and it comes to, uh, young families with affordable, uh, places to live as well as seniors and wanting to stay where they've, uh, raised families. They grew up, they raised families and being able to continue to do so uh, in some type of capacity. Okay, I'm off my soapbox on that. Any other comments on affordable housing at this point? Thank you, Mike. Thank you for your input. Okay, moving on to new business, um, I've contacted each member or left a message at the very least of the Planning and Zoning Commission. The, our town, our future group is, uh, working and they have, they're very, very good about, you know, including, uh, planning and zoning and at least talking to me and, uh, some of the other, uh, members regarding, uh, this leadership roundtable discussion. Again, I've invited each of the members to attend the leadership route, the, excuse me, the leadership roundtable will be led by O T O F as well as planning and zoning. Uh, Mike Gannick will be moderating as well as myself. Um, one of the roads, one of the larger roads that it leads to obviously is the plan of conservation and development. Now, our plan of conservation and development was, if for all intents and purposes, eight years ago, was supposed to be a living, breathing document that we updated on an annual or every two-year basis. And, uh, that has not taken place. Uh, you know, we, we had a good idea back in night, back in two thousand nineteen, we had this roundtable discussion. So we were about four years in and we were going to look at updating it. And then COVID hit after we had the roundtable and weren't really able to, we lost a lot of momentum that we had. And I really want to thank Mike Gannick for reaching out and, uh, keeping this, trying to rebuild this momentum to keep us going and to identify what's important for Ashford. Not only, you know, where are we going, but what did we accomplish in the last eight years since the P O C D was put together? Uh, how many of those objectives have been accomplished? Um, even, uh, objectives that weren't identified, things that were accomplished. I mean, just for the Planning and Zoning Commission, I think about the building regs that were redone, the Lake District regulations that were done. Um, again, a couple of the items, uh, you know, you think about, uh, an offshoot of Conservation, uh, Commission and Sustainable Connecticut and the bronze status of Sustainable Connecticut. Um, again, a number of things that we can hang our hat on, uh, as being successful. There are some other things, uh, you know, we have, we've got a long road to help and we're going to identify all those things. Uh, it should be a good program. Um, again, it's, uh, Wednesday night from seven to nine. Uh, simply put, we're going to be, uh, talking about our goals and objectives of the meeting. We're going to share what each person feels is important, the most important thing, uh, facing Ashford or what Ashford needs to do for the future. And try and have some open, uh, breakout groups and discussions and bring back ideas that we can, you know, actionable ideas that we can move upon and, uh, try and move forward for Ashford. And again, a lot of this, hopefully we can encompass into our P O C D and maybe get that done, not at the last minute for two thousand twenty-five, but work on it during twenty-three and twenty-four. So we're ahead of the game. Uh, and a recommendation from, uh, one of our own, Richard, uh, Williams was to reach out to N E C O G and try and gain maybe one of their interns to, uh, help us with some of the development and what they see from the other P O C Ds in the area. And how we can best develop what we have. They worked with us last time around and, uh, hopefully we can gain some resources from there too.
Where is this going to be held?
Dalton Hall.
Okay.
Big room. Any other questions? Thank you. Okay, so we are into discussion of the, uh, special permit, uh, application, P Z two-two-seven for increased lot coverage of ten Oakview Drive. I open it up to the group for, for discussion on this application.
This request seems to be in, completely in compliance with all of our requests. Seems to be in compliance.
I, I would appreciate, yeah, I appreciate the, um, efforts to deal with the extra, uh, water drainage. And, um, I would move that we approve it.
Before we take a second on that, I'd just like to know if, well, okay, there's a mo- motion, there's a motion to, uh, approve. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Jerry DeFran, yes.
Lord, Lord seconded that, Valerie. Thank you, Jerry. Um, any further discussion on this? Hearing none, I'll put it to a vote. Um, all those in favor of approving the application? Hearing none, I'll put it to a vote. Um, all those in favor of approving the application of PZ 227, the special permit for increased lot coverage at 10 Oak Drive, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved. Mr. Peterson, the application has been approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your time and effort.
Thank you.
Moving on to item C, uh special permit request, PZ dash 22 dash 6, uh special permit section 317D for short-term rental at 73 Lakeview Drive. And I open that up to what will seem to be a lot of discussion. Go right ahead, please.
Um, this is Janet, Mr. Chair. I, I have um concerns about whether it is in the deed that there's no business and whether rental income is, is not uh commercial use. I don't know how to determine that.
Well, we, we heard, we heard a couple of conflicting views on that, but I, I don't think I'm trying to figure out if that is of our concern. Whether it's in the deed or not for the lake properties and, you know, what their definition. Um, it almost turns into the applicant and the um uh Lake Association have to, you know, for lack of a better term, uh, oh, best define, who's got the best lawyer to define what uh commercial means in that instance? Again, in its, in its content, it seemed like it was of a uh, you know, commercial, uh, what was it? Uh, excuse me, commercial, manufacturing or agricultural nature. You know, you can't do it on the property. Uh, not that the property as a, as uh Mr. Hall indicated, I think as a uh, a passive uh income.
Jeff, if I could just jump in, I just want to clarify, those deed restrictions are not we're, we're not required or requested by the town way back as part of, you know, the original subdivision application, et cetera. So they're not deed restrictions that the town caused to have placed on the property and, and they would not be something that the town had. I, I could not take action against a violation of a deed restriction.
Oh, absolutely.
Because it's private, so um yeah, it would be beyond or outside the scope of the zoning regs or the PCC or building official or anybody.
Oh yeah, absolutely. Um, that's uh, like I said, it's uh it might feel like it, but we don't have a dog in that hunt. I mean, it's not for us to uh consider when it comes to the regs that we have put together.
Right. I see some positive and I see some negative aspects to this request. And the way the balance right now looks to me like is more negative than positive to it. So it's a difficult decision to make. But I see it as a negative, a, a negative effect on the on the town.
Um.
So.
Was there something?
Oh, can I ask?
Sure.
I'm sort of struggling here. Um, Mr. Panic came up with, and I know you didn't hear them all, Jeff, and I don't know how much we need to pay attention to that the driveway isn't wide enough. Um. Uh, they seem to say they didn't need permits for the work they had done or that the um paver needed to get those permits. Um. And um whether the house meets building codes, I would assume the house has to meet building codes to be sold. I don't, I don't know. Um, so maybe someone can help me with those, Mike, if you can.
Yeah, um, so driveway standards apply when we're seeking, doing a review of a property for, that's being newly developed. And these are private roads. So under normal circumstances for driveways, we would have the Public Works Director go out and take a look at sightlines and other things, but these are not town roads. Um, so there's, we don't have jurisdiction over aprons and, and other things. Um, and the repaving of a residential driveway. Um, you know, we wouldn't, you know, ob- oblige them to, to do ex design because they're existing homes. The other question was related to wetlands. The Wetlands Commission has jurisdiction over uh activities, soil disturbing activities. So this is related to the use of a structure. The Wetlands Commission does not have authority to um approve or deny the internal use of a, of a building, which is why there was no uh obligation to go there first. Um, building code, um, building codes apply when um work is done. So if you have a non-compliant deck, you can continue to use that deck, you can sell the house, you can do whatever you want to do, but, but when you um make certain improvements to electrical or this or that um that require review by the building official, then those components need to be done to code at that point in time. Um, but property sales, et cetera, wouldn't require code and um, there was another question about septic and, and other, e- essentially other permits, whether it be through building or wetlands or, or septic, et cetera. That's, I guess the easy way to say this is it's outside the scope of what you're looking at here. If the, we have regulations that, that say how many people should be in the home, they can't rent a two-bedroom to 10 people. Um, overuse of septic, if they were having large parties and, and large occupancy issues, the, the health department um could certainly get involved, but septic um building code, wetlands, driveways are sort of beyond that and, and we don't have data or, or, or evidence, if you will, to demonstrate some type of non-compliance. Um, so after this step, if they are approved, the next thing is that they would have to, you know, go before the building official for any additional renovations. If there was anything related to health or they would have to go and work with Lynette. Um, but if there's a two-bedroom unit or two-bedroom house and they're going to be renting it to human beings that are going to sleep in the same two beds that the owners would, they're not, is not necessarily going to be any obligation that they make any type of improvement or demonstrate something because the use won't change. The only other thing that I wrote down, I think I caught everything was certificate of mailings. So we, a certificate of mailing was done as required and they dropped, the applicant dropped that documentation off to the uh town hall and it's in the file. Um, so notices to butters were done. The sign was posted on the property. I think that was it. I might have missed something.
Uh, Mike, you mentioned uh the driveway at the 60, at 73 is on Lakeview Drive, which is a town road.
Okay, um, so yeah, I apologize for that, but um it's my understanding through, through um the Public Works Department again is like a repaving of a residential driveway. We don't, we don't obligate them to meet all of the various design standards that we would if it was being installed new.
Right. We don't require people to change their driveway to meet the curtain regs. It's if they're making improvements or rebuilding.
Yeah, the driveway wasn't repaved. It was never paved before. That was a new driveway.
I'm sorry, say that again, Jerry?
That was a new dri- the driveway, it was a dirt driveway. So it was never paved before. So essentially it's a new driveway.
I don't, I don't understand what that means, that it was a new driveway. Is, is it a new access that they put in?
No.
Or was it an existing, or was it an existing access?
It was an existing access, yes.
Oh, okay. So, I mean, it's, it's not like they cut it, it's not like they cut a new driveway into it.
You know, that they recapped the, an existing paved driveway. I, I, that's what I thought I heard. Okay.
So again, you know, part of the issue or what we're running up against, uh, just to be very frank, is the fact that we have ordinances that if people meet the requirements of the ordinances, they have the ability to do a short-term rental. I mean, we have nothing here that says, you know, if, if there's, there's a hue and cry against doing it, that you can't do it. I mean, we would have to have a specific reason against the ordinances, uh, the regs that we have, that they can't do this rental. I'm sorry, Mark, you have one to say something?
Oh, I was, I was just gonna chime in and agree with you that, you know, everything I heard indicated um that the halls going to meet, you know, the conditions of our short-term rental. And based on them meeting the conditions, you know, I would, I would move, I would be in favor of approving the short-term rental.
Yeah, and we can't, I mean, I know, uh, I think uh Mike had said something, I can't remember if it was Mike or Mr. Berry had said something regarding um the, you know, the fact that the Lake Commission or Commissions are looking at um uh the rules and regulations that they have regarding this. I mean, we can't, we can't delay on an application until they've gotten their rules and regulations put together. Uh, we really simply have to act on what we have as, as I said, the current requirements and the curtain regs that we have in place.
I, I just have one question for um Mike, D'Amato. Um, did, did you hear from any of the butters?
So we have three short-term rental applications at various stages, so I can't even remember who I've spoken to about what. But I did have, I guess what I would describe as productive discussions with uh Mr. Connors about the process and, and what was going on with the association and, and what they were considering. And we kind of talked about a lot of the concerns that were raised tonight and what types of concerns this commission can address and what types of concerns um this commission can't address and that the association has the authority to adopt criteria, which, which could be far more restrictive and, and impact property owners retroactively, whereas this commission doesn't have that ability. You know, we had discussions about various options to provide the associations plural with time to evaluate some type of a structure for licensing or criteria or a process, et cetera. And while their process could be retroactive and apply to people that are operating these uses now, the zoning regs can't be retroactive. Um, and, and so the flexibility was different. Um, either association can can adopt criteria and, and state that they um you know, require registration or, or licensing or permitting through the, through their local boards and and that would be something that they can do because they're a private entity. But we talked about a number of the concerns that came up. Um, and I, I did speak to a couple of other folks about using the boat launch, um, traffic, safety and other things. And, you know, I think that the conversation went similar to what happened tonight regarding the commission here can't, can't regulate or enforce the use of a, a launch or, or other types of um specific concerns because the property, number one, is private and number two, there's no way that, that the town itself could, could deal with it. So I think that's probably a really long way of answering your question, but um we did hear from some folks and I think everybody that I spoke to is, you know, is or was in attendance tonight.
And just for clarification sake, Mike, um, when it says under D1, um, obtain a zoning permit, that is one in the same as the special permit for our purposes?
D1 of the regulations?
Yeah, the short-term rental. Um, it says obtain a zoning permit. And then I'm trying to see if it called, what it calls it afterwards.
Yeah, so the, the zoning permit from the commission is, is what they're seeking now.
Right. And, and, and in other terms, it is a special permit. Because that, it is a special permit under our Lake District usage. It says special permit.
Right. So the, the way that, that the zoning regs are set up is that you delegate certain authorities of certain permits to me as your staff, but there's different types of approvals based upon the, the, the use, whether it be a retail or short-term rental, et cetera. Um, so they're seeking to obtain the zoning permit now.
Right. Right. I just want a clarification. Thank you. Is there any other input or discussion from any of the board members? Okay, so at this point, um, is there a motion on the floor uh regarding this application?
I'll put a motion forward to approve the special permit for uh short-term rental at 73 Lakeview Drive.
Motion, is there a second?
I'll second, Alex.
Alex seconds. Okay, all those in favor of a approving the motion on the floor for the short-term rental?
Aye. Aye.
Aye? Is that, I hear three?
Aye, you're me.
Oh, a fourth? Uh, all those not in the fa- not in favor?
No.
No.
Jerry, I'm a little concerned by your vote considering where you are, who you are. I would have thought an abstention would have been a better choice. But that's me. Uh, I've got, and abstentions? So I'm missing some people here. Uh, I'm sorry, Doug, did I not register your vote?
I don't know, did you?
I don't know, did you vote?
I voted in favor.
Thank you very much. That's five. Catherine, did I miss your vote?
Where is Catherine?
She's muted.
You're muted.
Yes. Aye. Yeah. Yes.
That was in favor, okay? And Jeff, are you there, Jeff? Not getting anything from Jeff.
Jeff is muted also.
I'm sorry?
I said Jeff is also muted.
Yes, he's got a but he was on phone, I think, too. He wasn't having a video. Okay, at this point, I have to go with the vote I have. I have a six to two in favor of passing the uh short-term rental. Okay, motion passes.
Thank you all. We appreciate the board's consideration.
Very good, Mr. Hall. Thank you. Very good, Mr. Hall. Thank you. Okay, rounding things out, coming down to D on new business. Connecticut statute eight dash two four is a regarding the municipal. Number of things, municipal changes and such to a. Municipal properties and buildings, and we were requested by the. Board of Selectmen to place a. Resolution for the roof replacement in Ashford, Ashford School. If you give me a moment. I'll see if I can find that. To give the actual resolution itself. Boy, here we go. Into Friday. Where did it go? There it is. Okay, so the requested resolution. Is a. From the selectman. And if I could just find it here again. Hey, Mike, I had a question on this because I was looking up some of the statutes and such, and they said, and one section said that such a. Approval, proved resolution from planning zoning is not required on an existing municipal building or property. Does that sound right?
Yeah, you know, my, my knee-jerk reaction on this was that it, it was not required. But. It's, it's not. Obviously, there's no conflict if, if the board were to. Choose to do one anyways, but yeah, this, I mean, the whole point of this is so that the town making. In theory is making some type of large decision. And the, the board is to make a determination that such decision is not in conflict with the P O C D. And the replacement of a roof on an existing school. Has got no, nothing to do with the P O C D because it's, as you said, existing.
Right. I will share this. Can you let me share?
Yep. Also.
Okay, see screen. And. Oh, that's the zoom thing. Where'd it go? I'll go with. I have it here. Here with me. I've got it on. The D drive. So this is out of a two hundred and seven-page report from the. Can everyone see my screen, by the way?
Yes. Yeah.
So again, I'll do two hundred and seven-page report from the Friar Associates who did a evaluation of. The school itself. This was there. I, I need to give something to the board to act on or to take a look at, and this is what I got. I was able to pull this out of that report. Um. And, you know, saying that the roof is in fair condition or require placement in the near future. Um, they're looking at the funding, capital improvements, I believe has the funding on this. It's been in the works for a number of years to be looked at. Fully adhered roofing areas occur in the building addition in two thousand and nineteen seventy-five and nineteen ninety-four. Re-roof was installed in nineteen ninety-two and new roofing is part of the addition in nineteen ninety-four. Small section of a shed was. Added in two thousand and fourteen. So it's. It's due. As you can see, there are a number of fair-to-goods. There's some pores in here. So again, whether we need it or not, they asked for the resolution to approve the building. So I don't think. I know we're all a little gun-shy about operating in a vacuum or not, you know, having the full story out there, but. I, I think, I think it's pretty much a rubber stamp on this for us to follow through on whether it's needed or not. So I guess I'm looking for a motion for the. To approve the resolution of the town of Ashford.
This is.
Replacing the roof?
Yeah, this is Janet. I know, I know the building committee has been working on this for quite a while and it's well, they need to do it. So I would make a motion that we approve. Roof replacement.
Do I have a second?
Second, Mark Schubert.
Second from Mark. All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions. Thank you. Okay. And last item we have on the, well, on the new business agenda is on item E P Z dash two-two-dash-eight special permit. For section three hundred seventeen D for a short-term rental, twenty-one Lakeside Drive. This is owner applicant is R and M Holdings. This is for receipt only at this point. We won't really have discussion. We're just receiving it. Um, I guess my usual course of questions, Mike, have all the fees been paid?
Yes.
Have all the forms required been received?
Yes.
Do you have any issues or concerns that you wish to raise? Anything with. Wetlands or any other group which we should be aware of, Eastern Highlands or anything?
Nope, the, the applicant has been provided with a copy of the regs. We've got the materials in the office, so they're, they're good to go for hearing.
And I do know on this, what's, what's interesting is this, part of this has kind of been discussed at the bottom of this application. We had the. Mr. Curvo spoke to us and. It addresses the issue about Bruce Fitzpatrick as the Ashford Wetlands agent, saying that the I W C application was not needed. Because short-term occupancy use of the house and yard would not change current residency effect, residency effect on the wetlands. So that's. Basically, it's redundant, but it's the same type of thing we just dealt with for the other issue. Anyways, that's on the application. Do I have a motion to receive the application?
Janet, so moved.
That's what I have a second.
It's second.
Second by Mark. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstentions. Jerry, can you hear me? Are you able to speak?
I hear you.
Okay, I was just wanted to check to be sure. I knew you had a muting issue before I saw your box light up. Okay. So moved. So we received that for our next meeting for hearing. Uh, zoning officer report, Michael?
So the only thing that I wanted to go over, we talked a while back about some of the legislative changes through. That, that pertain to planning and zoning that came out of P A twenty-one, twenty-nine. The most. And there were some others as well. The most pressing, the most pressing was the cannabis stuff, which is. What we, we focused on not long ago. The other part to that was related to accessory dwelling. Accessory apartments, in-law apartments, whatever you want to call them. I, one of the things we talked about way back after the act was passed is that our current regulations. Conflict with the language in the act. So. Based upon. It's, it's related to housing and related to, you know, a lot of the stuff being discussed with the Affordable Housing Plan and the Affordable Housing Plan isn't finalized yet. My recommendation to the commission from both a logistics standpoint, from, from a. Sort of. Wanting to not put the cart before the horse. Would be that we move forward with what's called an opt-out. The, the act says that unless a commission chooses to opt out by the end of twenty twenty-three or twenty twenty-two. The requirements in P A twenty-one, twenty-nine. Apply will supersede any regulation that you have. If we choose to opt out. Our current regulations remain in effect and we can then go through the process of finishing the Affordable Housing Plan. And then endeavor to make changes to our own regulations without the. Without sort of the, the beating drum of the public act hammering us from a timeline perspective. So without getting too far into the weeds, my recommendation would be that the commission move forward with holding a hearing. At the December meeting on opting out. Which is the first step in the process. And then that recommendation also goes to the board selectmen and they would also concur with the opt-out. And what that means is that the criteria of the public act related to accessory dwelling units would not apply to Ashford. In twenty twenty-three.
Okay, permission. I'm just writing some notes down. Thank you, Mike. And to selectmen also. So we would coordinate with their. Meetings also to meet that end of the year deadline.
So if after the hearing with E Z C, the commission voted to opt out, we would then basically forward that recommendation, almost like a reverse eight dash two-four. And then. Present the case to them and, and ask that they opt out. Just to keep the local. Criteria in place until such time as the commission can review them. Without having the. State's requirement supersede.
What we have. Yep. Okay. So it looks like they. They currently have a meeting scheduled the third Thursday would, the third Monday would be the nineteenth. So that's after our meeting. And so as long as we get it done after the twelfth and get it on their agenda, we should be good. Okay. Saying that the opt-out goes all the way through, not making any assumptions. Okay, so we'll put that on our agenda for next month. So we will have two hearings on that. Agenda also, one for the short-term rental and one for the opt-out.
Yeah, that agenda we have. The first short-term rental, which was received and, and asked to be postponed. We've got the one that we just received tonight.
Oh, that's right. Okay, the Corvo's here. Yeah, that's, I was wondering about that, where that disappeared to. So they're gonna be on next year. Okay.
We will have a. Subdivision application. It's a one lot. That was received two meetings ago. Again, they requested a continuance. Because they needed to go through wetlands approval. So that will be in December as well. So. December meeting will be. Busy.
Chuck full.
Chuck full.
For turn and the opt-out. Okay. All right. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay, Michael, thank you. Uh, I am looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
From Jerry. Thank you, Jerry. A second on that.
Second.
Janet's seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'm not even gonna ask the other two. Thank you all very much. Thank you for your attention. Man, it was a long session, subtle hearings, good dialogue, good discussion. Lots of thought on some of the issues coming down to be faced and we'll do it again next month. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Yes, yes.